Meeting to order, City of Palm Coast, City Council Special Business Budget Meeting. It is Wednesday, September 19th, 2018. It is 5:05 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number D, which is a presentation on Fiscal Year 2018-19 Budget.
Beau. Good evening, Council. This concludes, this is the last stop in a rather lengthy process that started nine months ago. Tonight before you, you'll have $162 million budget that addresses your priorities along with the operational needs of the City of Palm Coast, as well as keeps Palm Coast as the second lowest millage rate for a city our size. So I definitely want to emphasize that. With that, Lena and Helena will give the details.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beau. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Beau mentioned, we've spent the last six months preparing for tonight. I just want to take a quick look back, if I could, at some of the workshops and presentations that we've had. We began back in January, during the months of January, February, and March, with presentations related to our fiscal year 2017 wrap-up. We presented the annual financial audit, as well as the annual progress report. We also presented the 2017 survey results. We also, during that time, had a number of workshops to update our strategic action plan, our annual process. During the months of April, May, and June, we had a workshop to revise our 10-year infrastructure plan. We also had a presentation of our year-to-date budget results, as well as an overview of fund accounting, long-term financial planning, property taxes, and our other revenue sources. And then during the months of July and August, of course, we had our budget workshops. We began with the general fund in preparation of adopting our maximum millage rate, and we continued on with our proprietary special revenue, internal services, and then our capital project funds. And we ended it off with a presentation looking at our final proposed budget as a whole. And as you know, we were here just a couple of weeks ago for our first public hearing to adopt the tentative millage rate, as well as a tentative budget at that time. And we're here tonight for our final budget hearing in order to adopt a final millage rate, as well as a final budget. What you have here before you is a summary of our 2019 budget as a whole. We begin with a look at our general fund, the top left, roughly $37.4 million. Down below, you'll see a look at our special revenue funds, which includes our grant funds, as well as our capital project funds. We also have our enterprise funds, also known as our...
I'm sorry, can you please, the audience, this is a public hearing, I'd ask for the audience not to speak during the presentation. We are here to listen to the presentation, not interrupt the speakers. Thank you, sorry for that.
We take a look at our enterprise funds, in the top right-hand side of the slide. That includes what we consider to be our business-type funds, our utility, solid waste, stormwater, building, and our IT enterprise portion. And then, right below that, is a look at our internal service funds, which includes our health insurance, fleet, communications facilities, and then our internal service portion of our IT fund. As Beau mentioned earlier, our 2019 total proposed budget is $162,197,869. And I just want to emphasize once again that this does include the additional funding for our technology improvements, as well as the increase to RSVP. This is a look at our final millage rate, consistent with what we adopted for our tentative millage rate just two weeks ago. The 2019 proposed final millage rate is 4.6989. And we just want to point out there at the bottom of the slide that for an average tax bill, which would be about $100,000 taxable value, the increase specifically related to the increase in millage would average about $11. And for tonight, these are some action items before you. We have a final budget to adopt for the State Road 100 CRA. We also have the final millage rate to be adopted, and then the final budget for fiscal year 2019. Any questions?
Council, any questions or comments at this time? So the first item for the approval would be the CRA. So I would reconvene? Okay. So I'm going to recess our City Council Business Meeting and convene the State Road 100 CRA Business Meeting. The State Road 100 Corridor Community Redevelopment Agency Board hereby proposes to adopt a budget with a total appropriate expenditure and reserves of $2,202,162. Do I take public comment under this item? It doesn't say that. Am I... I do?
Yes.
We'll now open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on this particular agenda item, which is our CRA discussion? Please come up to the podium. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin. Again, this is for only item number two, which would be the CRA budget. Okay, we'll close public comment. I will take it back to this council. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed?
I think no.
We do not speak out in public meetings, sir, okay? What I said was, we have public comment for just the CRA. We will have other budget discussions and presentations and questions and time to speak. Thank you. We have a motion to approve in a second. Okay. Call to question, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Again, I would please ask the audience to please, please keep your comments in the audience, quiet, please, while we're going through this process. Okay, we'll move now to, we will reconvene the City Council Meeting. And we move to Agenda Item Number E, is that correct?
Correct, number three.
Okay, so we'll now move to our resolutions. Agenda Item Number E3. Just want to make sure I have the right one, accepting the final millage. Okay. The City of Palm Coast proposes to levy a millage of 4.6989 mils. This is an increase of .3581 mils, or 8.25% over the rollback rate of 4.3408. We will now open it up to the public for public comment on Agenda Item Number Three, which is the resolution adopting the final millage for fiscal year 2018-2019. Again, this is for discussion on the millage rate. Following that, on our agenda, we will discuss the actual budget amount. So anyone that wishes to make comments on the millage rate, please do so at this time. You have to come up to the podium.
First, I want to thank you very much that you gave us opportunity to talk to you. We was trying to work with you yesterday, and we was bummed, waiting for you one and a half hour. Today, we have a crowd here...
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, what?
State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm resident of Palm Coast from 1999. My name Larissa Bolotnikov. Yeah, thank you again that I have opportunity to talk to you. And this time, after the September 5th up to today, we did a lot of work. We searched on your website, we found all numbers, we have all your graphs, diagrams, and everything. And we discovered that it's a lot of bumps against the residents. That's what came, we came to conclusion that you guys not in, working in our interest. That's we under impression story. So we start to search, we start to study, we did our homework, and we shall continue. If you guys were not gonna hear us, we're gonna talk to another people that will hear us and will help us to make our living residents in Palm Coast very secure, and everybody will happy. You will see some crowd today. It's not all of them, because people working until 5:00. A lot of people not happy in Palm Coast, because you guys all the time raising property taxes. Property taxes increasing, so the debits of the residents increase, and most of people, they have their security, it's not increased every year, so we're not happy with that. And we start to search in your website, on your numbers, is it any other option that you guys can take the revenues and put in your new budget? We're not against a new budget, we know that you guys will use them, hopefully, probably, to make our city more beautiful and more visible for us. We used your diagram, and about 45% of your revenues, it comes from the utility service. If you will increase our property taxes, it's gonna give just 1% of your budget, which is not much, doesn't give a lot of revenues from 162 million. So we want you to see if you can take another revenues and put to your new budget against, and we against the increasing of property taxes. That's just one thing. Another, we have all information about the people who works for Palm Coast, City of Palm Coast, all your salaries and everything, and you know what, for little Palm Coast, have 509 people working in the City of Palm Coast, that's too much. We're gonna study this. We just started to search for that, but that's too much. And you also want to spend these utility revenues to hire another 20 people for utility service. You already have 81 people, and you have...
You have four seconds, ma'am.
Okay. I will, shall continue later.
Thank you. Next speaker. Now, we, we actually do not, it's part of our rules and procedures that we actually do not applaud after each speaker. This is a business meeting, this is a public hearing, this is about our budget, so I would ask you to please contain your clapping during this meeting. I'm sorry. These are our rules and procedures. Thank you.
Tell me when I can start.
Okay, please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
My name is Vadim Zaitsev, and I'm the resident of Palm Coast. 2018 taxes were increased because of the 2017 citizen surveys. On page 35 of 2018 annual budget report, it states that there were 426 responses. Out of the population size of 82,000 people in Palm Coast, it was only half percent of our population. So you allowed half percent of our population to increase the property taxes for 100 of us. Also, we have big doubts about the validity of the statistical sample used for our service. For example, on page eight, and you can see it here, you know, you can talk to me after that, but it's on your website. For example, on page eight of the 2017 citizen survey, which is the latest one taken, it states that 20% had quote-unquote contacted Palm Coast elected officials. For the city with a population of 82,000 people, it means that 16,000 of citizens were able to contact only five elected officials out there. It's not humanly possible. We have big doubts about the validity of those services which you used in order to increase our taxes. Yesterday, it was a dozen of us who were denied an access to one elected official after having a meeting scheduled, confirmed by the City Hall office, and waiting for one extra hour before being told to leave because the, one of you was not available anymore. How can you consider those citizen services valid, yet those services were the main reason, based on your explanations of why you increased our property taxes last year in 2018? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Again, if that's going to happen, I'm going to state it every single time. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Larissa Schwartzbin. I own a little business, Anruh the Hungry, since 2010, 11, anyway, almost seven years. And I definitely against increase in taxes, because they will hit me from both sides. First of all, I am homeowner, so you're gonna increase my taxes because I live in Palm Coast. Second, I rent property, and then if you increase the property there, then I have to pay more rent. I struggle as is with paying rent and have a very, very slow business, because Palm Coast is not Manhattan. But seems like you try to compare meal rate with Miami Boca Raton, where I would love to be, but I cannot be there, because I choose Palm Coast, which is beautiful place to live. If you guys will make it a little bit better and consider it not to increase the meal rate, which is only the 1.5 million extra money which is going into your budget, which is 162 million proposed in 2019. What's the one extra percent should take so much, you know, but a lot of people will suffer because of this decision. So please, try to be efficient and find where you can save money, not to spend...
Thank you for your comments.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Jenny, Jennyya. And two years ago, I was voting for you, Melissa. I was so excited. I was so proud of you. And then I met you on the opening of the Russian Culture Center. Remember, you came to us in sneakers and sport clothes, and we were all dressed like a black tie evening, you know, but that was okay, because you're the mayor. And now, I'm meeting you the third time in my life. And this is what I want to say about budget. On page 27 of the 2018 annual budget report, you indicate that 30% of the city population are 65-plus of senior citizens. This is it. Okay? 60, 30%. On page 29 of 2018, of the same budget report, it states that the average annual income in Palm Coast is 31,000, while in Florida, the average is 45,000, which is almost extra 15,000 as a disposable income. So we are low income. And I am a senior citizen. I retired to Palm Coast from Chicago six years ago, because I like this place, because there is low property taxes. This is great place for senior citizens to live here. And now, what I see, in these six years, my property taxes keep rising up and up and up, and with my family adjusted gross income, which is 33,000, I don't qualify for senior exemption, like many people do. Because I was working 30 years very hard, paying all the taxes, paying for my social security. Now, me and my husband, we live on this social security. And if you raise our property taxes, I will have no money to buy the food. Because as you know, the cost of living is not increasing, the social security is not increasing, but the Medicare does. This year, we pay more for Medicare than last year. And next year, probably, we will pay even more, because we are maturing, we are growing, we became older. I'm 72 today. Maybe I don't look this old, but I am, I am. And this is what I just want to say, squeezing the last pennies from its senior citizens is not the most noble things to do.
Okay, it's, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. Next speaker. Thank you for your comments.
Three minutes, my three minutes. So please be extra sensitive to senior needs. Please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
How you doing? My name is Leon Levitt, and I am a homeowner, and also a resident of Palm Coast. My question is in regard to millage, right, the increases of taxes. On page 27 of your 2019 budget presentation, you have a millage rate or history table, while 2018 millage of 4.59, compared to a proposed 2019 millage of 4.69, which is increasing 2%. Back in the year of 2008, it was only a 2.96. So in the last 10 years, you already increased our millage rate by staggering 55 or more percent. Also, on page 66 of 2018 annual budget, you reported your state, city council is sensitive to the public desire to maintain the level of property taxes, which increased a 55% in 10 years. Doesn't seem to be sensitive, okay? Our wallets, not expendable, but it seems like City of Palm Coast is increasing those taxes as fast as possible. So what I'm trying to see, if you guys could see that we cannot stretch our wallets, all right? That's all.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Ella Chigeva. At the last budget public hearing, two weeks ago, you stated that city was hit with two hurricanes in the last year, and that's why extra money are needed. Well, on page 18 of 2018 annual budget report, it states that the city will be compensated for at least one of them by the federal agency called FEMA. At least mean, could be both, right? Maybe it did not happen yet, but it will happen soon. While the most average Palm Coast resident could get from FEMA is the loan, which is stuck with paying of the many years to come. So we got the loan, and you got the present, and we have to pay for the money that been given to you by FEMA, right? And I'm resident of Palm Coast for 20 years. I raised my kids here. I homeowner for 20 years. For 20 years, nothing been done for our kids here, even the soccer team, soccer team in the schools, which I took my kids to, they, the coaches was never, was never get paid. They've been working for free. So nothing been done for kids, and nothing you guys doing for senior citizens here. And you just, I guess, care about your salary, that's why you raising our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Yeah, it's just, I'm Olina Bolotina. I, where I live here since 2001. Well, this is about the salaries and stuff. I have questions and something to say about the amount of city employees. And it, according to latest information provided by city's clerk, there are 509 city employees. And next year, it stated you would like to add 20 more positions to it. On page 27 of 2018 annual budget report, your statistics indicates that in the last 70 years, the population of Palm Coast had been growing by 1,000 per year. So while our city's population is growing by 1%, why do you increase the city staff by 4%? 20 new employees slash 50, 500 employees and equals 4% increase. It's a little bit disproportionate, seems like, to increase the city's workers four times faster than the population grows. Also, on page 20 of 2018 annual budget report, when speaking about the interns, you write the city is hoping to recruit a multitude of candidates. We would like to hear some explanation on that, because I guess, all the salaries and amount of employees you guys have, it comes from our pocket, so I think we're entitled. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening. Tom Olssner, Palm Coast. I guess it was around three weeks ago, I attended the budget workshop, and I asked if the, in the budget, took into consideration the tariffs that were going to be imposed in your, in the budget process. And Mr. Landon responded, "Well, for projects, you've, for small projects, you've got a 10% reserve, and for large projects, you've got a 5% reserve." Anybody who's been, had a career in doing anything in construction realizes that those are just geared towards project costs itself, without having to deal with a 25% tariff. So it would say to me that, given that no, I don't think anybody has gone back and taken a look at what those capital expenditures are going to be, that you're really looking at, right now, your millage rates are flawed, and your budget is flawed. And I would strongly urge you to start taking a look, very quickly, at what projects, new construction projects can be axed, so that you can put that money into the R and R that needs to be done for swales and other projects and ongoing things, so that you're not going to already be behind the eight ball. You've got a little bit of time to do it, and you need to be doing it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing no one, I'll close public comments. I will take some of these, I know that we actually, I think it's important that we put up, I've asked staff to put up an actual tax bill for us to walk through, just as more of an explanation to those that are attending tonight, really, what your tax bill looks like, and what we're responsible for, and what we're not responsible for. Because there's many other items on your tax bill that we have no control over.
And Mayor, while Lena and Helena are pulling it up, just, you know, I want to state, you know, if, as you look at your tax bill, Palm Coast generally represents about 23% of the expenditures. There were a couple comments related to soccer coaches, and I've seen other things in the media about police officers. We don't control those entities and those organizations, they're actually a separate line on your tax bill, so, but our, our actual millage rate is related to the services that we provide. And so while they're pulling it up, just want to cover, if you don't mind, Mayor, a couple of the questions. The question about switching revenue sources. Early in the budget process, we talk about the segregation of funds, and how utility funds can only be used for utility, general fund can only be used for general fund. So that's not necessarily an option for us. There was a conversation about the additional staff that we're hiring. We just constructed wastewater treatment plant number two, in order to keep toilets flushing in Palm Coast in the future. Obviously, there needs to be staff to operate that plant 24/7, seven days a week, because our citizens expect that service. So there is staff for that facility. And then, finally, just want to reemphasize the fact that we are the second lowest millage rate for a city our size in the state of Florida. And so I know this is an increase, it's a minor increase, but when you look at statewide, and even in this county, the City of Palm Coast has a very conservative millage rate, and that's because of this council, past councils, and practices. So Lena, you guys ready to show sort of how we compare, and also what the average impact to a resident would be?
Yes, thank you, Beau. Mayor, council members.
This is an example of a trim notice that we had prepared for the presentation. As you can see, the City of Palm Coast only amounts to about 22% of the total millage rate that is collected. You'll see Flagler County, unincorporated, and entire county is at $502.64, we're at The school board also has a portion of those taxes, they were at $381.70, and $195.41. And the rest of the millage assessed goes split between the Flagler-Muscuta Control, the St. John's Water Management District, Florinale Inland, and voter-approved debt, which is not related to the City of Palm Coast. So as you can see, out of the, in this example, the tax bill of $1,469 for proposed 18, only $302.10 come to the City of Palm Coast. This delineates by line, the assessed value, at $111,000 assessed value with the $50,000 exemption, the total taxable value around $61,000, amounts to a total taxes of $1,428.60, and the City of Palm Coast's portion of that is $284.47. And...
Do you want to keep that?
You can just bring up the chart about how we compare, or...
Yep.
That'll be good. So it's important to note the example about the current millage rate versus 2008. There's two portions that generate what your property tax bill. One is the millage rate, the other is the taxable value. In 2008, before the economic recession, taxable values were quite significantly higher. And so while the millage rate may have creased over time... And so, while the millage rate may have creased over time, the amount of taxes, I think, were just back to two thousand and eight levels of the actual total amount of taxes we collect as a city of Palm Coast.
And, um, I think it's important to note also that the city of Palm Coast portion, uh, it relates to about thirty-eight dollars a month per resident, and it covers emergency services, code enforcement, housing programs, our streets rehab programs, parks, paths, and trails. So it's quite a bit that is covered on a, um, about thirty-eight dollar a month, four hundred dollars a year.
If you can go back to the few slides, I want to really explain, sort of, that, that taxable debt, um, that, that, again, we have nothing to do with.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Flagler County is an independent governing body. Um, I know that you attended their meeting, uh, from what I've been told by Commissioner O'Brien. Um, they levy a trim and a tax rate annually, as do we. Uh, the Flagler County is responsible for the sheriff's department, uh, the tax collector, the clerk of court, um, the supervisor of elections, and the property appraiser, um, as well as, uh, the services they provide, which would include the jail, which would include the judicial center, um, and unincorporated property, uh, that they actually maintain, uh, and, and actually invest in. Um, the, the second is the school. Um, some states, uh, some municipalities are responsible for the schools. In Florida, we are not. That is a separate governing entity. Uh, the state of Florida, uh, under the Department of Education oversees that budget. Uh, so the school board, although they set the trim rate, um, the allocation comes directly through the Department of Education, and there's a performance standard measured formula, uh, that is sent down. Now, I will say, we are trying to change that formula due to the fact that we are one of the lowest-funded school districts in the state of Florida, uh, which makes it a challenge when you're talking about soccer coaches and, and things like that. But we have no governance or no authority over the school district, our school systems at all. Um, in fact, I know last year, in the Parkland shooting, uh, that occurred, uh, unfortunately, within a school in the state of Florida, the state legislature allocated, uh, eight hundred million dollars, uh, to harden our schools, and that included, uh, school resource officers, which required each school to have two additional, uh, officers in the schools, uh, some mental health counseling, as well as, uh, offering, um, training if, if the school opted into the guardian program. Um, again, that was a burden. Uh, it was an unfunded mandate, uh, as often things are in Tallahassee. Uh, so they allocated the funds, but it, they didn't allocate, adequately, uh, fund the program that we were required to implement. So I know Flagler County, under the sheriff's office, partnered with the school district and shared that expenditure. That was one that is a new expenditure, uh, that is one they're going to have to figure out in the upcoming years, because I've been told that funding will go away. And again, that goes back to that school discretionary that we have no authority over whatsoever. The Florida, or the Flagler mosquito control, uh, district is an independent governing agency that is elected by the people. They have a, a representative board of three. Um, I, I've, I've heard discussions about, you know, uh, missing funds that they, uh, found, uh, one point eight or something million dollars, that that authority and entity, that they did a financial audit, uh, that was requested by our state legislative delegation, uh, to do, but again, that had no, uh, bearing on, uh, what we have authority over, and it's certainly not something we have any responsibility for. Uh, they are responsible for the spraying, uh, of, uh, the mosquitoes in our community to keep it safe for our residents, uh, for the health and welfare. The St. John's Water Management District, uh, is, uh, there are several water management districts throughout the state of Florida. Uh, that is under the authority of the governor of the state of Florida. Uh, that is on your tax bill annually. That is a millage rate, uh, that is set by the governing board that is appointed by the governor of the state of Florida. They set that millage rate, uh, they allocate funds. We do partner with them often. We've received grants, uh, to rehab our weirs. Uh, so we continue to seek grants from the Water Management District, knowing that our residents pay into that, and knowing, um, the partnership adds value to the community as a whole. Um, but they, they regulate a lot of, um, water quality issues, um, you know, wetland mitigation strategies. Uh, they are a regulatory agency that comes in and, and permits projects from an environmental impact standpoint, and that is their role and responsibility, separate from the city of Palm Coast, independent, and we have no authority over that millage rate as well. The Florida Inland Navigational District, um, again, that is an independent governing body. Um, they have, they maintain the intercoastal waterway. Uh, they do offer grants annually to what is paid into each community. Uh, some of the things that we've taken advantage of, of grants that they have allocated, has been our Long's Landing, uh, project, and we continue to actually apply for funds. Each governing body within the county, uh, can apply for funds, um, that has waterway projects. So, um, they have a governing body. Again, that is an appointment by the governor of the state of Florida. Uh, they set that, um, right? And that is the rate that is independent from us, um, but it is on your tax bill. And then the voter-approved debt. Uh, I want to talk about this because this was, um, got voted on two different times over the last twenty years. One of them is the environmentally sensitive land program. Uh, it's what the county oversees. The voter-approved debt is, is the, under the county's purview and control. Um, they actually, uh, have allocated funds for the purchasing of properties that have been preserved in conservation, uh, in perpetuity. So think about, um, if you've ever gone out to, what is that, uh, very large park? Princess Place Preserve, uh, that was paid for with a grant, not only by the voter-approved debt, but it was in partnership with the Trust for Public Land. In addition to that, um, that was a half-cent sales tax that was levied against the voter-approved debt, uh, which paid for the Judicial Center, the County Administration Building, and a few other items that the county commission, separate from us, deemed, uh, appropriate within the agreement, uh, that was actually levied against, uh, the residents of this county to pay into. So they identified different capital improvement projects that they felt were beneficial. The voters approved it. Um, they approved to, to go into debt, uh, for these projects. And I, I thought it was important to explain this because everyone has come from a different part of the country. They've, they relocated to Palm Coast, and yes, we all agree, it's a beautiful community that we, we get to enjoy. Um, but, but very little do we have control over when it comes to these other funds. And I, I think, you know, we have spent an extraordinary amount of time going over each item. Uh, we can't force people to take surveys, but we do offer it to all of our residents. Um, we actually encourage it. We do educational campaigns to make sure that they recognize the importance of having their voice heard during that process. We do it every year. Um, we, we've changed it a little bit. We used to do it every other year with a national company, and now we've taken it in-house, uh, to try to better communicate with our residents, uh, to have them identify their needs. The council then takes those, um, the data, uh, that's put in by, uh, the people that do respond and have, uh, sat down and taken the time to do so. Um, and then we actually prioritize our goals in a strategic action plan process, separate from our budget workshops and hearings. Um, our staff then takes those priorities and goals and attaches a financial, um, aspect to those goals, and we set out a plan. Um, our capital improvement projects are paid for by sales tax dollars. Our roadway projects, um, are paid for by the gas tax. So we always encourage shopping local because it supports our local business community, and on top of it, it actually generates revenue for us to offset the costs and the burden to the adware and tax-based dollars, uh, to maintain our roads and to improve our community, and we use those funds very wisely and very strategically. Um, as far as the FEMA dollars, I can speak to that. Eighty-five percent is, on average, what we get reimbursed for FEMA reimbursement dollars. We're not going to get every single thing that we've, um, submitted to FEMA. And FEMA is a very interesting agency to deal with because they don't really seem to answer to anybody. Uh, we've worked with our state legislative delegate to, uh, try to come up with a process to get those funds. Uh, they are working diligently, uh, with the Department of Economic Opportunity in order to get us those funds in excess of five million dollars that we're still owed to the city for the two storms. So the fifteen percent that's remaining, that is just what the FEMA reimbursement dollars are, but we have overtime that we could not submit under FEMA standards. Um, we had debris cleanup, some we could submit, some we could not submit. Uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, this is a part of doing business. We are in the state of Florida. Hurricanes are part of what we have to, um, certainly deal with from time to time, and unfortunately, we had back-to-back storms that did impact our budget. But that was one aspect of our budget, and what I stated was, there were several things that we took into account. One of those were the unintended consequences of Mother Nature, but the other ones were, were specifically developed to invest in our community, to further enhance our community with diff, different job creation, supporting our local businesses, uh, making sure that we're creating an entrepreneur ecosystem, innovation, taking advantage of our fiber, which is our fiber-owned utility, which saves the cost of tying to our public facilities and to our schools. It's going to become a greater revenue source for us that we can take advantage of and continue to reinvest in technology and improvements in our community. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not easy as we sit up here, but we do take our responsibilities very seriously. We have taken an extraordinary amount of time, uh, throughout this process. Um, this did not happen overnight. Building a budget does not happen overnight. It happens annually. Um, but I will tell you, I would love for our staff to actually send to anyone, um, that wants it, uh, the whole, uh, matrix and measurements that go into each goal that's established and prioritized, because it's quite substantial, it's extensive. You will see exactly why we make the decisions we make, and it's a thoughtful decision process, it's not one we take lightly. Those are my comments on the, uh, public speaking. Um, so...
May I address one thing? I would just like to, to say, the first speaker who got up said, "Thank you for letting us speak." Um, and, and I just wanted to say, "Thank you for exercising your right to speak." We do, we as a council don't allow you to speak. That is your right, and, and I appreciate everyone who comes here and exercises their rights as a citizen, as a member of the community. Appreciate that. I hope you'll show up to more of these, and that you will, uh, contact us when you need something. Um, we are servants of the public, so, um, we're here for you, and, and our decisions, you may not understand them, and we're here to answer your questions or to point you to the staff who will. Thank you for your participation.
Yes.
I just wanted to add, one of the speakers, multiple speakers, were talking about percentages of tax increases over the years, and Beau hit the nail on the head. It's a scary figure to say, "Our taxes have gone up fifty percent over X number of years," but that's not how percentages work. You can't just add them together if the base isn't the same. So if, what Beau said is perfect, perfect, uh, response is, if you look at the actual taxable base for which those percentages are applied upon, then you'll see that we're almost back to pre-two thousand and eight levels.
Right. And just if I can piggyback, since two thousand and eight, the number of city facilities, the number of services, the number of residents has increased drastically, um, since that time.
Thank you.
I have a question. Can I?
And that's not how this process works.
But tennis instructor. This is how the leader.
City of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a millage rate of four point six nine eight nine mils. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Seconded?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We will now move to agenda item number four, which is a resolution adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. City of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a budget with a total appropriate expenditures and reserves of one hundred and sixty-two million, one hundred and ninety-seven, eight hundred and sixty-nine. We'll now open it to the public. Anyone who wants to make public comment on agenda item number four, which is the actual budget, please do so at this time.
Yeah, in a sense, you're right. We are, you guys, we are not involved in a complicated process of, uh, the government, uh, structure, right? But what we do know is, for example, uh, the last, you know, articles in, uh, Flagler, uh, sorry, in, uh, Palm Coast Observer, uh, had stated that the Flagler County, it is a separate entity, and they start the employees from nine dollars an hour, which is almost the minimum wage in the state. As opposed to you, the Palm Coast, you start, uh, even your interns from thirteen and a half dollars per hour, which is almost forty percent higher. That's what the difference is. That's where the fat, so, I mean, quote-unquote fat, could be cut pretty easily. As far as the service, yeah, you move them, uh, online, and, um, it should decrease the, the validity even more, because how do you know? It's not the same guy hitting submit button one hundred times. Now, they are not even traceable. Before, it was twelve hundred of them that were sent out randomly, uh, to the city, to the city citizens of Palm Coast. And, um, uh, and it was a professional statistical campaign that was doing that. So, uh, I would, again, we, we would love to speak to you, you know, personal on that, but, uh, the validity of the service, which you treat very seriously, uh, it seems that, you know, it's not really valid. Uh, and, um, uh, as far as the, yeah, I mean, basically, you are a separate entity, the Palm Coast. The way Mr. Clufus, the average guy, looks at the bill, he looks at the total, but even when, like, for example, I went line by line, city of Palm Coast was increased, uh, you know, by five point five percent. Flagler County increased, uh, my taxes personally by five point five. For example, I even looked at, uh, welfare communities and Grand Haven, uh, their taxes in, uh, two thousand and five and two thousand and six, right? Uh, you can look into this too. They were, let's say, about eight thousand dollars, now they are still about six. And the reason being is, because while you were increasing the millage rate, uh, the property appraiser office, uh, did not appraise the values as much as they were back then. So let's say the house, which was appraised for half a million, now is appraised for three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's a discrepancy right there, where the wealthy people still pay less than they were paying in two thousand and six. Nothing against the wealthy people, but it does create a discrepancy. And, um, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I'm going back to the, you spending money on the, uh, new hiring people. Mr. Paul Gott, right? Uh, he mentioned that, uh, they have to hire twenty more people in utility, uh, seven more people in utility department to make sure the toilet will flush. Can you think that eighty-one people that you have right now in utility department will be okay to make sure that our toilets flushing? Actually, six from them, directors and supervisors and managers have the, uh, budget salary of hundred thousand a year.
Not appropriate.
Hundred thousand a year.
I'm not going to say this again.
So please, look more careful what you guys doing to save money, to save our money as a residents. Um, then, uh, better communication. Yeah, um, but about better communication, we try to communicate with you guys. We try to set appointments. It took us whole week to get appointment to see Ms. Holland, uh, yesterday, and we didn't, we didn't accomplish it. We didn't see you. We was waiting for you, and actually, you don't have the hours. Can you make hours that you can, um, talk to the residents? That you will be closer to the residents? So we will know, let's say, you have like once a month, a day, at least once a month, we know that you have your, uh, permanent job. Uh, once a month, we can see you and talk to you with our, uh, problems or whatever we think to talk to you. Please make hours for us, okay? That's another thing. And, um, you spend last year six million dollar, that's what in your website, six million dollar to improve our streets. Of course, we're gonna look closer and, uh, we will search where your money goes, but we didn't see that improvement that worth six thousand, six million dollar in Palm Coast. No lights, no, I mean, we have to look closer, what we guys doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I just have a small question. You said you're not in control of the coaches, but I see in the list of employee that there is, uh, two tennis instructors who's get paid fifty-two thousand a year. Who they instructing to? Tennis instructors?
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, um, I'm resident of Palm Coast from two thousand years, um, have a construction... Have a construction business. Working for Fannie Mae. And I have a lot of subcontractor working for me, Central Florida, Jacksonville, LA, except Miami. So, I live in Pine Grove area. And I saw, I remember probably five years ago, you just making like wall around Bel Terra from the school and from Palm Coast Parkway for both sides. So, every year, these guys cut the concrete, I think thick concrete, like six inch thick and like four feet minimum wide, cut and replacing. What is money going for? Who did that job before? Why don't put metal mesh? If that's some parties go down or go up, why is doing job not right? And you just redo every year, same road. What is just people walking? What is like truck road or something else? Why is always repair? And repair right now too? Where is, who, let me give you like work order proposal, who making this job? And why is not in warranty this one? What, every year you repair that? Not just repair, replace? Where does my, this our money is going on this one? And one more thing. I live, like I said, in Pine Grove area. And my guys working in Marina Point is have like T-Mobile service, have like Sprint, I got AT&amp;T. So, only Verizon covering Palm Coast area. 10 years ago, I told to AT&amp;T, "Hey, guys, at my home, I have no service. I have no service in Pine Grove area." He said, "Okay, we will fix that. Call me after half a year." I do like three years, nothing changed. Then I said, "Oh, I buy that some microcell to increase service just in my house." So, and my guys working, I can connect someone. So, and then finally, AT&amp;T called me and said, "Your government doesn't give permission to put wireless tower because nobody give us this permission. And we have no coverage in Palm Coast area. You put half million for improving, for technology improving. Just do this. You can take money from this. You just, taxes people pay for the tower and we got a better service over here." And last thing, in three years, in my property, taxes erased for $400 is why.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Close public comment. Okay. We will address the speakers' comments. You know, my apologies for not being able to meet with you yesterday. We had a business meeting that went way longer than what we anticipated. I cannot get up and leave a business meeting. I run meetings. I emailed my administrative assistant knowing that I would not be able to make the meeting, and I had a scheduled meeting at noon. So, I'd be happy to sit down with you at any time and make myself available to do that. But yesterday was not something I could have changed. You can't end a city council meeting until city council business is done. So, but I look forward to sitting down and hearing your points and certainly working with you. We'd be happy to talk, send you information about our street roadway improvement project and get that information to you on what streets have been maintained and what order and everything else, and how many miles, and we can work with you to get that.
Sure.
We do have a parks and rec department that, again, has nothing to do with the school district's activities, but we do offer, we have a tennis center, we have a golf, we have amenities within our community, just as many communities do, that offer those opportunities for our residents to go out and enjoy. We have 125 miles of bike trails that are connected. We have to maintain those to be out there. And that's something that we have residents that are members there, they're users of the system. They pay for the instructors, you know, with fees and everything else. And we've adjusted those fees last year, and we've created more of an in-house structure. Cell phone coverage, that is a great point. We, last year, went out and actually retained a company, Diamond Consulting, that actually created a comprehensive approach for cell phone coverage. I could not agree with you more that it's unacceptable not to have cell phone coverage in a community in 2000, you know, many years ago. So, they have identified areas. We have fast-tracked those areas for permitting. They work directly with the providers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. We do know that there's two towers that are being built, and they have agreed to go on those towers as well, on existing towers. So, that is moving forward. That is something we took very seriously, not only for the communications of our residents, but that's a safety issue, frankly. And we do not need to have our residents without cell phone coverage. So, we are pleased with the outcome with that. But if your providers telling you, because we've heard this, I would, please have them call me directly because what they're saying is not true. What they're saying is not true. Okay. Anything else that I missed?
I just wanted to address two minor ones regarding tariffs and cost of construction. Of course, we budget for increases in cost of construction, you know, goods and services. You know, sometimes our projects are quite a time out. And so, if you can tell me what's going to happen with tariffs in two years, that would be great. But we definitely are looking at it, so I wanted to answer that question. And then the second one was as far as the replacement program for sidewalks. I know we use a heavier PSI on our sidewalks, but we still have heavy equipment and there are sometimes in wet areas. When those sidewalks do crack and break and we get a report of that, we are obligated to go and fix those because otherwise, it would open up the city to legal exposure. And thus, that would pass on more costs to citizens if we were sued for folks walking or tripping on sidewalks. So, it may seem like the same patch is done every so years or a different patch, but we're actually, you know, for exposure, we need to maintain our infrastructure.
And I will say, I mean, our utility department does an exceptional job, frankly. The City of Palm Coast purchased the utility from a private provider when the city incorporated in 1999, made the decision that we wanted to control our own destiny, frankly. This was predated anyone on this council. My father was part of that process, who served on the city council. And our utility department provides a tremendous service for our residents, not only to provide clean drinking water, but we do a lot of reuse. We take the water, we treat the water, and we work with the Water Management District and Department of Environmental Protection to ensure that there's an adequate amount of supply of water. As we continue to grow, that consumption is an issue. We do assess impact fees for new growth, but that is a one-time cost that is attributed to projects. But ongoing cost, you need to maintain the system, you need to ensure that you're improving the system. And when that capacity happens, we just went through a whole process of doing our second wastewater system that just opened recently, that is going to continue to allow us to provide that necessary service to our residents. So, it's not just a matter of flushing toilets, frankly. There's a lot more that goes into it. Go ahead.
I also just wanted to say that something that might be helpful, I know it's a lot to look at our budget and take it all in, but we have a Citizens Academy. Some of you may have taken it, some may not have. The Citizens Academy takes you department to department and helps you to understand what goes on and why we would need 22 new people to handle this new section that we're opening, to walk through the budget. They walk through Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation?
Yeah.
They walk through the utility. And it really is very informative. They serve you dinner also, which is why I did it. You get dinner every night that you go to it. And it's great for a group of friends to get together, to go through it and, you know, and understand each department. I think it's a lot of help.
That's a great point. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to read this. "The City of Palm Coast proposes to adopt a budget of $162,197,869. I'll entertain a motion." Move approval?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. City clerk must forward a copy of the resolution adopting the final millage rate to the property appraiser, the tax collector, and the State of Florida Department of Revenue within three days.
You got it.
So, are these items not on the agenda?
You have one more resolution approving and piggyback?
Agenda item number five is a resolution approving piggybacking Florida Sheriff's Association contracts and associated purchase orders for fleet vehicles and equipment as approved in the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Every year, city council, mayor, we attempt to capture the end-of-year pricing available on our fleet vehicles. So, what this does is the sheriff's contract ends on September 30th. With your approval tonight, all the vehicles that are slated and equipment slated for replacement this year allows us, gives us the authorization to go ahead and purchase those under the 2018 pricing. So, this typically saves us anywhere between 5 and 10% on the vehicles rather than buying the next model year. So, that's what's in front of you this evening. And this is per our fleet replacement program, where each department pays in to the fleet replacement, so when it's time. And after the mechanics inspect the vehicle and it's reached its end of life, they go ahead and replace the vehicle. So, this approval tonight is to piggyback those contracts and take advantage of that end-of-year pricing.
Okay. Council, any questions or discussion on this agenda item?
Just, what is the purpose of piggybacking on the Sheriff's Association?
So, piggybacking essentially allows us to use the purchasing power of a larger organization. So, we're essentially using their contract and their pricing rather than going out to bid ourselves. And so, the Florida Sheriff's Association does this statewide, gets bids from multiple vendors for multiple different vehicles, and it allows us really take advantage of that pricing rather than just go out to bid ourselves. So, it's part of our purchasing process. It is allowed as a procurement method. It saves the time, the expense of obviously going to bid. But more importantly, it's the purchasing power of the larger group that they sharpen their pencil and get better prices to.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on this agenda item only? Please do so at this time. Again, this is just based on our resolution for the Sheriff's Association contract. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council and I'll entertain a motion. Move approval?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number F is public participation on items not on the agenda. Again, not on the agenda. We've closed the public comment portion for items speaking about the budget, the millage rate, and the contracts associated with our purchasing for fleet. This is your time to speak on items not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Yeah, yesterday, I listened to a little part of your workshop, of your city council workshop, and it's concerning our, by this time, our former city manager. So, our city manager, Jim Landon, was fired yesterday by the majority vote of the city council, not by each one of you, but by the majority. He was making about $180,000 per year. He was going to stay in his position for six more months until April 2019. That would be half of his salary and about $90,000 is the expense to the taxpayers without any severance package because he would not get one if he were to retire by himself. Now, based on the decision voted by the city council yesterday, and one of you brought it up yesterday as well, Mr. Landon will be getting $225,000 as a severance pay, which is $135 more of the expense if he was not fired yesterday but stayed for six more months. Only one of you brought this point up yesterday, but overall, wasting $135,000 of the taxpayers' money doesn't seem prudent decision to you. Can you comment on that, please?
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
It's again me. I guess we here, here all residents, to talk to you and tell what we're concerning about. And we probably hoping that you hear us today. And it's going to be better way to conduct the business of City of Palm Coast, that it's going to be more, better in revenues and better conducting. Let's say, make sure quality jobs, that you will hire people, and look on the better proposals for the project. That probably will save some money for you. What I want to propose, you know, maybe give more information for residents. When you send that utility bill every month, it has like a little brochure with the bill. And it says some project that you guys will do in the City of Palm Coast, which is helps a lot. We all read it and we all know. Maybe you will have some information, what about the education of residents, or where we can meet, what time we can meet with you. You know, like some communication between you guys and us residents. We will have better communication, better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I just have this organization chart that shows that the very top one is Palm Coast citizens, which are us. Then is Palm Coast City Council, and then city attorney, city manager, and then rest of 560 people, right? So, that, for me, it means like we hire you, we were voting for you, and we were talking today, and you did not listen us. Your decision, your resolution was pre-voted before we spoke. So, you already decided. And everybody say aye. Nobody opposed. So, I'm very disappointed. I'm frustrated, and I'm not going to vote for you anymore. And I will tell everybody I know, don't vote for these people because you don't serve us. You want us to serve for you, for your salaries. We have the list of the salaries, $188,000.
This is not a portion to do the budget. We've already discussed the budget. These are items not on the agenda.
Okay. With my $31,000, my income, and when I look at the $180,000...
Ma'am, this is not for discussion. These are items not on the agenda. Thank you. Next speaker.
Actually, I have one last question. We live here for like eight years, and the Belatera is never lighting it. My husband is 70 years old. He cannot see in the dark. I cannot see in the dark. We live not too far from school. Every time we driving at night, he turn into school because he misses. I mean, is any possibility we will have lights on Belatera? We pay enough taxes. And if you just give away people $100,000 for just, they don't like somebody to work with. But use this money to make lighting on Belatera, at least for people. That at least it will be done for people.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I just have one question. My name is Wick. I live in Palm Coast for 17, 18 years. There is two words, hear and listen. Do you hear us or you're just listening? It's a big difference. Because if you're listening, according to this diagram, about 45% people that are not producing revenue, but they're paying taxes regardless, high, low, okay? I want you to listen, not just to hear the words, okay? Because these people, all of them, and many other ones, are paying your salary. They are producers. You are consumers, okay? And if they're saying something, it's not because, "Oh, my God, I have to pay more or less," because they elected you and you are to serve them, okay? Like a police, they're here to serve. Not to be tough, you're here to serve. And listen, and don't cut them short when they're trying to say something, okay? Don't make faces, "Oh, my God." Listen to them and hear them, please. That's what they're here for. This is open meeting. This is a free country. We pledge to the flag. We have rights to say why we're here for. Thank you.
Again, we will not have public discussion on items regarding the budget. I will take your comments very seriously, but I would respectfully ask that that portion is over. Yes, your three minutes are here. We are listening. We are hearing what you're saying. Next speaker. Okay, I'll close public comments. As far as the decision to terminate our former city manager, that is under our authority to do so. We decided unanimously, Ms. Shipley was not present at the meeting, but it was a unanimous vote by this council to move forward, to get our priorities accomplished, and do it more expeditiously when we've seen it historically done. So, we're looking forward to moving forward in a new direction. And I loved your suggestion about utility bills and the newsletter, and we're certainly continuing to try to improve that, to communicate better with the residents. We've discussed about changing the newsletter with our communications team, and so, your input would be very helpful during that process on what you'd like to see in your newsletter and your monthly utility bill. So, I definitely appreciate the input, and we do value the input. And streetlights, so, we do have streetlights coming on Belt Air. That was also part of the budget process this year. We went through and determined our priorities on streetlights and sidewalks, and we have a plan moving forward on where those streetlights are going to occur, so you will see streetlights on Belt Air. We agree, it's a safety issue, it's a dark part of our community. We've addressed it as a council this year in the budget, we've allocated funds for that solution. So, discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Good evening, say, council. Just wanted to give you a heads up, your next workshop will have a couple items related to, of course, the outcome of yesterday's meeting, so I will be in contact as directed with the executive search firm, and then we'll talk about your expectations for me as well in this position at that next meeting. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, bye, sir.
Move we adjourn?
Thank you.